Ready? I'll call the Southborough School Committee open meeting into session on Wednesday, November 13, 2019. The first item on the agenda is audience sharing. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? Okay.
Just, I'll just share something. And I mentioned it to Keith, right? But the Throtier Cafeteria, which was used for, you know, the MPC. It worked out great.
Great.
Can't come up with a better word, I guess. The venue was good, the whole setup was good, and so it was really a perfect location, you know, to have it. There weren't a ton of people there, but we filled up, they filled up kind of the chairs that had been set up. I think there will be a future discussion about how to reach out to more of the community, possibly maybe even using the schools to assist in that because the schools connected to half the community in general. But it was, it worked out extremely well, and the committee appreciated the use of the facility that the schools offered a lot.
Great. Very good. Okay, anything else? All right, so we'll move on to new business, Woodward School Improvement Plan.
Great. Very excited to share the accomplishments of Woodward.
It's a global, a global perspective of.
Yeah. Sure. It's a 35,000 foot. Show it here. Hold on. It's all right. There we go. Perfect. So, really, I'm starting to say, I'm really excited to share some of the wonderful accomplishments that we made at Woodward School for the 2018-2020 Improvement Plan. And to make sure I don't forget any of the great work that we've done, I have diligent notes here, so I'll be referencing those quite a bit as we, as we move along. So we had three goals for this improvement plan. The first was to support students in acquiring the skills necessary to recognize and manage their emotions and behavior, demonstrate empathy for others, and thoughtfully navigate challenging social situations. I'll be talking about some of these action steps in later slides, including our work with PDIS, executive functioning, as well as building on some of those existing programs that we already have running at Woodward. Our second goal that we were doing was to expand upon and refine our data analysis at the classroom, grade, and school level to respond to the diverse learning needs of our students and to drive instruction. Some of the focus areas that we'll be talking about for our second goal, we're looking at creative scheduling, collaborating among staff members within Woodward, but also within other schools, calibrating our expectations for student work around writing and math, and then professional development opportunities. And finally, our last goal was to provide high-quality instruction and engaging learning opportunities in the area of scheme that are aligned to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. And in the next few slides, we'll be talking about our use of root coding robots in the classrooms. We'll be looking at community partnerships and creative arts assemblies and programming that was brought to Woodward School, as well as some of the special community events that we had taking place. So reflecting back on our social-emotional learning goal, there are several different programs that we either had at Woodward or wanted to expand upon, or some of those new ones that we wanted to bring to Woodward. So the first piece is really just reflecting back on our care themes and monthly classroom goal setting. So across Southborough Elementary Schools, care themes are used as guiding principles for our school community. While care themes are historically highlighted at each assembly, we felt that the monthly focus was sometimes lost after the initial assembly introduction. To energize our care assemblies and provide students with more opportunities to think about, discuss, and model each theme, throughout the month, we decided to update our assembly structure and purchase care-themed banners to be displayed in the rotunda. That's an example of one of the banners right there on the right. Each month, with the introduction of a new care theme, teachers lead their students in discussions centered around the theme, then create goals for how they can, how they can and will demonstrate the theme in their classroom and around the school. These goals are then posted in the cafeteria above the banner highlighting the care theme, and are later used as we reflect at the next community meeting and reflect on our progress. So to kick off a care assembly, we use our care theme. We'll talk about ways that we could show this theme around our school, and then, like I mentioned, those themes are then talked about in the classroom, students create goals, and then we reflect back on those goals at the next care assembly. So another piece that I wanted to highlight was the PAX Good Behavior Game staff training. So during our November 5 Professional Development Day, Woodward staff took part in the PAX Good Behavior Training, offered in partnership with the Department of Public Health. PAX is a set of strategies that helps students learn important self-management skills while collaborating to make their classroom a peaceful and productive learning environment for all. It runs parallel to PDIS and the care themes that we discuss, you know, every day throughout our building. The training was very, was very well received by staff, and we are currently exploring how to best incorporate strategies into our classroom and throughout the school, as well as a timeline for implementation. So at the heart of the PAX Good Behavior Game are ideas around self-regulation, student accountability, being able to initiate tasks. Those are all things that we talked about through PDIS, so that we felt that this was, this runs parallel to some of those things that we had already been working on. As a staff, we've observed a need for executive functioning skill building in our students. To help students learn these skills and strategies, students take part in executive functioning lessons during their weekly enrichment blocks provided by special education staff. During this time, they are taught how to be more independent with planning, organizing, and prioritizing tasks, ways to regulate their emotions, and improve their cognitive flexibility. To build upon these practices, staff took part in the training on ways they could incorporate these same concepts into their daily routine. A similar training was also extended to parents and families during the principal coffee that I held last year. Participants left with a better understanding of ways to develop executive functioning skills in their children and resources to use at home. And finally, through community partnerships like Southborough Ethan Family, Family Success Partnership, or peer groups like Peer Pals and the MOA Biofeedback Software, students receive individualized support in the areas of social and emotional learning. In their small groups and on one-on-one settings, students are provided direct instruction to help them develop friendships, work collaboratively with others, demonstrate empathy, and regulate So just to add one more piece, the care banner that's on the right-hand side, those are, I think Paul, you were able to take the, the school tour, and they're all up in the rotunda area. So it's something that we talk a lot about, whether it be through our morning news or just as students are walking through the lobby, we want students to be thinking about these nine care themes and how they impact themselves, but also the, the school community as a whole. Our next goal, focused on data analysis and informed practices, and the work that we had done towards this goal, I've bullied some of those points, but I'll be speaking to them specifically. To effectively meet the needs of our diverse population, we have worked to identify potential changes and adjustments in our scheduling that would provide more opportunities for direct teacher support. This year, we have made adjustments in our technology scheduling, providing classroom teachers with additional time to work in small groups or individually with students. Teachers are now working across or between grade levels to provide intervention support and enrichment activities to students in other rooms. This includes opportunities for writing conferences, guided reading groups, targeted interventions, behavioral support, and relationship building. As we continue to calibrate our writing instruction and student learning, we have used team planning and staff meeting time to review and analyze student writing samples. Using common pre- and post-writing prompts, teams are able to identify gaps in student learning and then provide remedial instruction to close those gaps. Additionally, we are able to provide, or we are able to identify relative strengths and build upon those successes as we apply similar strategies. When we look at our math professional learning communities, as we continue to build upon our practices of data collection and analysis in collaboration with Kathleen Lozot, our K-5 Math Curriculum Coordinator, we have established professional learning communities with a mathematics focus. The monthly PLCs provide an opportunity for staff to analyze student data and discuss instructional practices. In addition to assessment data, we have also used student work samples and performance tasks to identify relative strengths and weaknesses. This practice has also led to a shared vision of student work at Woodward. And to, to build on that shared vision at Woodward, Kathleen and I have partnered in, partnership with also Kathy Lozot, to create vertical teams where grade three teachers and grade four teachers are working together to compare beginning and end of year student data, as well as instructional practices in the area of fluency and automaticity. This open dialogue will create consistency for students as they transition between Southborough We felt an integral part in the data analysis and informed practice also comes down to professional development and making sure that our staff members have the tools that they need so that they can provide those remedial services to students. So an integral step towards reaching this goal has been the continued professional development of educational support personnel. To that end, Woodward District staff have provided a range of trainings to build capacity among our ESP staff members. Through a series of math-focused workshops, ESP staff members were trained on concepts including bar modeling, the diagnostic toolkit, and intervention strategies. In collaboration with our district ECBA, ESP staff members were trained on the principles of applied behavior analysis and received an orientation on the ways to support students and gather relevant data. That took place at the beginning of the school year. Our final goal, or goal three, focused on STEAM, so science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And as we worked to achieve this goal, the focus areas of community partnerships, engaging experiences, and cross-curriculum opportunities were identified as things that we wanted to focus on. As part of our goal to provide high-quality instruction and engaging learning opportunities, Woodward Green Team has teamed up with Chestnut Hill Farm in Southborough. Through this partnership, members of the Green Team traveled to the farm to learn about the role of pollinators in our ecosystem, then planted seeds that would later be used to create a pollinator garden at the front of Woodward. While our team had approximately 25 members last year, we're very excited to share the group has nearly doubled in size to 46 members, or just under 40% of our third-grade students. While this is an after-school club and we're excited at the opportunities, we're also very excited at the possibility of extending this to all students, not just students who are able to attend a club. As a way to highlight the importance of mathematics beyond the school day and its connection to our STEAM goal, Woodward Staff, Woodward School hosted its first Community Math Day in the spring of 2019. Organized by Nicole Keller-Her, one of our grade three teachers, and Kathy Lozot, our K-5 Math Curriculum Coordinator, community members joined students and staff to share how they use math in their job each day. Professions represented included building and construction, seamstress, financial planners, college professors, bakers, realtors, small business owners, DPW employees, accountants, pharmacists, printers, and engineers. Many brought artifacts and pictures to demonstrate the importance of math in their daily work, including recipes. We had a crane operator come in with some pretty impressive attachments that they would use to haul huge steel beams, and he was, did a great job of explaining the importance of math and how that goes into the length of the boom and the length of the cable and the distance that they need to travel. Kids were so excited about it, and we're looking to build on that experience this year, having our second annual Community Math Day, but also having a STEAM Day. To celebrate the arts and highlight the diversity of our student body, Woodward has been host to many authors and storytellers over the past several years, including Len Cabral, who specializes in African, Cape Verdean, and Caribbean folktales, Nadia Hahn, who writes stories about her Caribbean heritage and her own experience with immigration, and Kate Messner, who writes historical fiction, as well as nonfiction books about animals and insects. Most recently, as we continue to highlight the connection between the arts and sciences, we welcomed author Jerry Palata, who is best known for his nonfiction Alphabet and the Woodwin series. As a culmination to our One School, One Read author study, students had an opportunity to meet Mr. Palata and ask questions about his inspiration behind animal books, the steps he takes in the writing process in ways they can be successful authors. Through curriculum integration, we've continued to strengthen our students' coding skills and their ability to problem-solve and debug when they experience an unexpected result. What started as a few coding lessons with Root has developed into a more robust unit of study that is carried beyond the tech lab and into the classrooms. In the areas of social studies, math, ELA, we have a number of sample lessons that our tech teacher uses in the classroom, but also our classroom teachers use. And finally, through a grant sponsored by SEF, our Woodward Story Walk was installed in the fall of 2018. And while that's not new, the ways that, in which we're using it are. This has been a welcome addition to our school and has provided the opportunity for students and teachers to enjoy a good book while being in the natural environment. Our school library, Lori Weiner, has created a number of resources and has used the Story Walk as a way to connect science curriculum standards to the outdoors, including a title that coincided with Jerry Palata's visit to the Woodward, and another that taught about animal adaptations that ran, that was out in the Story Walk last spring. To build on the outdoor learning opportunities available at Woodward, a little library was recently installed. A Algonquin High School student, Fred Probst, installed the library as part of his Eagle Scout project. Now students and families, community members are encouraged to browse, borrow, and share a good book while enjoying our beautiful campus. That little library is actually right outside the parent pickup door, which we thought was a great location because it provides families waiting with younger children to take a book, find a spot to read, or enjoy the Story Walk while they're waiting. So while we still have some important work ahead, we're certainly proud of the accomplishments so far, and are looking forward to closing out this second year of the School Improvement Plan on a high note.
Come there, Eddie. You're speechless.
I think that's the second time you said that. I don't know what I believe in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that picture from Chestnut Hill Farms, that was, that's the Green Team, and they were there to plant seeds that would later be used in the pollinator garden. And I think this picture was also maybe a few days after some new kids were born.
Yeah, I think so.
Kids as in sheep.
As in goats.
Sheep.
Yeah. It's the first time.
Or maybe your father did. It was a great day, and like I said, something, I think we could really continue to work on bringing that type of ecological understanding to our students.
It's a great partnership.
I just have one comment. I just would like to thank Principal Moochie for his great leadership at Woodward School. I think the school climate and culture and faculty and staff are all about students, and that's very evident in your presentation, so I just want to publicly thank you for your work and your leadership.
Thank you.
Those young girls really aren't old enough to be connected to Woodward.
Okay, thank you. So next, we have an MCA, an MCAS presentation. I'm bringing my agenda with me.
Good evening. I'm happy to share with you the 2019 MCAS results. MCAS is an annual assessment that takes place in the spring and helps us understand how we can improve teaching and learning. The data provides us with district, school, and student accountability. The goals of this presentation are to update school committee and community on MCAS, provide an overview of the MCAS online assessment environment, share the Spring 2019 MCAS results, discuss progress and next steps, and answer questions and discuss preparations for the Spring 2020 MCAS. It is important to put MCAS in context. What happens at the state level drives the work that happens in our district. We'd like to highlight a few of these. In 2016, our state adopts the Science and Technology Engineering Framework. In 2017, our state revises the English Language Education, sorry, the English Language Arts and Math Curriculum Frameworks. The following year, 2018, the History and Social Science Framework is adopted, and in 2019, the Arts Framework is revised. Although the frameworks do not tell us how to teach, they do provide an understanding of the content and knowledge and skills that students are supposed to know and be able to do by the end of a grade level or when our students graduate from high school. We have seen a shift in what students are expected to know and be able to do in the Next Generation MCAS Assessment. The shift is from understanding and remembering information to being able to apply the knowledge, analyze the information, evaluate, and create. The Next Generation MCAS Assessment is one way to assess how our students are meeting these higher-order thinking skills. This is the third year administering the computer-based assessment in grades four through eight, and the second year in grade three. The contents assessed are English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science in grades five and eight. Some of the changes in the Next Generation MCAS are the universal accessibility features and tools available for all students, for example, the Highlight Zoom, Line Reader, Item Flag, Audio Notepad, Item Eliminator. There are additional accommodations for students on individualized education plans and for English learners, especially at the beginning levels of acquiring English. The test items that our students are exposed to are multiple choice, multiple select, short responses, technology-enhanced open response, and essay in the genres of narrative, expository, and memoir. The metrics, there are two metrics. The achievement metric, which is exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. And there's also a growth metric, the student growth percentile, or SGP. The test is untimed, meaning that a student could take the whole of a school day to complete the test session for that day. So taking a closer look at the achieving metrics, so the achievement level, there are four, as we've already mentioned, and the student growth percentile, or SGP, is measured on a scale of one through 99, and typical growth is considered between 40 and 60. Taking a closer look at the achievement levels, students receive scale scores which are converted to achievement levels. A student who receives meeting expectations is a student who is on grade level and is on track to succeed in that subject at that grade level. We'll now take a look at MCAS English Language Arts in grades three through eight and compare our district to the state. These are last year's achievement levels, and Southborough outperformed the state in terms of performance. For example, the state performed at a 42% in meeting expectations, whereas Southborough performed at 55%. And whereas the state performed at 10% in exceeding expectations, Southborough performed at 24%. And the goal is to shift performance from right to left, therefore from not meeting expectations to exceeding expectations. If we take a look at our district and compare 2018 results to 2019, we saw an increase in exceeding expectations and a decline in students receiving partially meeting expectations. In terms of, this is another visual to look at performance and to look at growth and achievement. The X-axis is student growth percentile, and the Y-axis is percent meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. There are four quadrants, so if you look at the upper-right quadrant, it is high growth, high achievement. Lower-right quadrant is high growth, low achievement. Lower-left quadrant is low growth, low achievement. An upper-left quadrant is low growth, high achievement. The goal is to be in the upper-right quadrant, that is, high growth, high achievement. And if we take a look, that is where our district scored, in 52% student growth percentile and an overall growth and achievement in meeting expectations and exceeding expectation, which was 82%. This is an analysis on how each group, school performed from 2018 to 2019, the student growth percentile, the percent meeting expectations and exceeding expectations, and the overall growth and achievement. All of our schools reached high growth and high achievement. The overall student growth percentile was 52%, and the overall growth and achievement in meeting and exceeding expectations was 82%. And now we'll take a look at mathematics in grades three through eight and compare our district to the state. And in terms of mathematics performance, our district outperformed the state. For example, in meeting expectations, the state reached 40%, and our district reached 53%. Another comparison is the state achieved 9% in exceeding expectations, where our district achieved 32%. And once again, the goal is to move from left to right, from not meeting expectations to exceeding expectations. If we compare our district in 2018 and 2019, we saw a decrease in partially meeting expectations and an increase in exceeding expectations from 25% to 32% in 2019. In terms of a visual representation of growth and achievement in grades three through eight, we performed in the upper-right quadrant with a 55 percentile for SGP and an 86 for meeting and exceeding expectations. Overall, the district is in the upper-right quadrant of high growth and high achievement. And for a mathematics performance summary, this is an analysis of how each school performed in 2018 and 2019, the student growth percentile, the percent meeting expectations and exceeding expectations, and the overall growth and achievement. All of our schools received high growth and high achievement. The overall student growth percentile was 55%, and the overall growth and achievement in meeting and exceeding expectations was 86%. So how do we use the MCAS data? So we receive a vast amount of data from the Department of Education, and we're able to desegregate data according to subgroups. We're able to identify areas for improvement, analyze individual student results, use the results to inform teaching, and triangulate MCAS data with local assessments. And at the district level, we examine system-wide patterns and trends, we evaluate our curriculum over time, we identify priority areas, and we are monitoring the state landscape assessment. The Department of Education, as we have said, provides us with a wealth of information. It has district profiles where families can find this information, presented tonight, and performance of subgroups. There are also parent guides to MCAS that explain all about MCAS and the digital MCAS library, which provides teachers and families with great The Department of Education, as we have said, provides us with a wealth of information. It has district profiles where families can find this information, presented tonight, and performance of subgroups. There are also parent guides to MCAS that explain all about MCAS and the digital MCAS library, which provides teachers and families with great resources for students to be prepared for the assessment. There is always a room for growth and improvement, but we know that our students who leave Trotter are very well-prepared for ninth grade at Algonquin, and in turn, our students who graduate from Algonquin are very well-prepared to pursue their college career and work goals. So across the metrics, we are a very high-performing district, and MCAS provides one measure among many as we are invested in our overall social, emotional, and academic education of each of our students.
I have a question. Rhoda, could you, I can't recall, I'm sure this has been explained before, the growth metric, what is, is the growth a comparison of one year's score to another year's score? What does that represent? Okay, I understand the achievement part.
Oh, the SGP?
Yeah, so it's a, it's actually a cohort comparison. So it takes, it's two, over two years, and it takes students who perform at a similar performance level. So compare students who scored, for example, in two thousand and eighteen, maybe in the five-hundred level in terms of scaled score, compares all the other students in that same area of scores, and sees how they perform in two thousand and nineteen, and then it looks at how they grew compared to like cohort, like students. And they come up with that student growth percentile. So it's really a cohort analysis, cohort comparison over a two-year period.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Is it tougher to do better in that category, the higher performing you are?
You know, it's, you're, compared to your cohort, you know, so a group of students who performed in a similar manner than you did, so it's actually, it's actually a more fair measure. So for all students across the performance continuum, it actually is the same in terms of getting that student growth percentile that's high.
Well, hold on. I mean, if you get a really good score, isn't it tougher to?
Yeah, but the band, the improvement band might be just two, you know, two percentage points, it's really small, versus if...
I see what you're saying, though. Yeah. Jess? I'm just curious that Trotter had a big jump in both English and even more so math. Is there any, anybody know why? Is there, was there a change in curriculum or just the different student population?
Sure. I think one of the things we are doing more consistent, consistently, is reviewing this data on an ongoing basis. I think the state is giving us more data to begin with, and we are providing that to departments earlier in the process. So I think one of the things that teachers have a tendency to do is maybe look back at student performance. What we're trying to do is shift their mindset and look, have them start looking at the kids in front of them, and start looking at the data to start customizing their approaches. So I think that there's ongoing work with the data. We also identify early on students who are in the high needs category collectively, not just within departments but within the school. We identify supports that can take place throughout the course of the year to help buoy their, their, their performance. In addition to that, one of the things that, for example, for the English department, this, now that the, the test is online, we actually have gotten the student open responses, the type of open responses, and we see the scores that they've been given for an open response. And that's pretty powerful, not only for the teachers but also for the students. So I think what the state is, I think one of the benefits of the computer testing is what we're provided to use to make interventions and approaches in our classroom ongoing and meaningful. So I, I, I hope that's the, you know, this trend continues. Our departments have done a tremendous amount of work with the data. They customize their, you know, student learning goals or professional practice goals around some of this MCAS data, so I think that has been the biggest driver to date. Anything to add, Keith?
I don't, I think we're also becoming accustomed to the new test because there was adjustments over the last couple of years of not only the computer base but kind of the focus of the standards themselves, and we can kind of see some patterns and, and we stress things at different times of the year. And, you know, for a while, we tried not to dwell too much on, you know, MCAS and preparation around it, and almost it's kind of like this pushback a little bit, and I think we embraced it. So Gary's absolutely right. It was a comprehensive part of their planning process, their goal setting, their review, and we saw that reflective in the stuff they were giving us. And then, you know, they were very happy to see these results. So I think the teachers saw kind of, especially this past set of data, like kind of the fruit of that labor in a way, and I think it hopefully like will be a trend that Gary indicated, you know, moving forward, we'll be able to isolate those kids, especially the ones that are indicated as high needs, and you really get specific with how we're going to customize our approaches with them. So that happened really extensively last year. Assistant Superintendent Martino at the time kind of got us onto this high needs cohort, and then we decided we got to tackle this. And I think that had an immediate benefit because we were able to do that over the course of like three months or so last year, and we saw that result kind of take shape. So it's a combination of efforts.
Can I piggyback off that? I completely agree with what they're saying, but I think what we're seeing is a cumulative, a combination of all that we're doing at all of the schools, how we're examining data, what we're doing with what the state is providing to us, how we're having conversations between the schools and, and really putting the students in the middle of all of our conversations. So kudos to you. But I think it's really all of us working together to, I mean, Keating and Gary are right that they're providing us much more comprehensive information that we can then utilize at, at the school level, and it's really, it's really beneficial to all.
As a parent, I've seen a big difference in the way, the kind of math they're doing because my kids are now in eighth and fifth, and so my fifth grader had started with what I think they knew pretty good when she was in pre-K, and so she's, I think she's the first class that's come through all the way.
Envision.
Yeah. Which is really interesting to see how, you know, and then I'm looking at the NERE scores going up too, and it's interesting, like it's one word in here, like everybody's building. It's interesting. It's good, it's great, it's really good to see.
So just a couple of comments in terms of our district performance. I think it's important to note that our third graders in ELA in math, out of all the third grade students across the Commonwealth had the highest performance of any school. In terms of our aggregate performance in grades three through eight, we had the highest performance in terms of all schools, grades three through eight, except Lexington and Belmont, so we were third. And NERE school, in terms of how schools are classified based on this MCAS data and accountability data, there's a series of, it's a continuum from broad comprehensive support to schools of recognition. As a district, we were recognized as meeting or exceeding our targets, and NERE school specifically was designated as a school of recognition for their performance. So I just would like to congratulate the principals and specifically Kathleen and her faculty and staff for their great work.
So you say the third graders have the highest performance across the state? That's amazing. That's huge. And then three through eight were only behind two other districts?
Correct.
That's amazing. Congratulations. That's really impressive. It's impressive.
Couple questions. So you said you're getting more data from the state. I remember years ago, there was an issue because you would get answers to some questions but not all. Is that still the case?
That's still true.
That's still true.
But the open response is, is, is very powerful. You know, so that, that has been important for our students to see. So, and I think, you know, although we only get part, we only get some questions, I think we also have a collection over the years. So it's not a matter of, you know, because the questions aren't going to be the same. It's almost like the style of questions, the types of questions, that familiarity. So there is, you know, our, the students' exposure and the teachers' exposure to the types of questions in that is, is pretty extensive at this point, so.
And, and the state will also, just recently came out with the changes that will be coming on the next assessment, so we have the ability to look at that and, and respond to those shifts so that we're preparing our students ahead, so there's no surprises.
But the state hasn't released those open response questions yet. Like, and it was right around this time that they did last year, so we, what didn't we check last week? I think we checked late last.
I checked today.
Did you check today? I wasn't there. So we're looking to that because that's what our teachers are asking for. They really want to see those open responses so they can start digging in. So they, they bugged me last week about it, and I'd like to get back in there and check it out, so.
So, so I understand that you're getting all this data and you're using it to tailor plans for individual kids, right? But it's not just for MCAS, right? I mean, this is, we see growth beyond MCAS, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Yes. You know, and I think, you know, I think that, that's a great point. I think that this is an external metric, it's a very public metric, but there are a lot of other, you know, data sources that we're using that we're creating common assessments, you know, common writing samples that we're also using to triangulate results and to ensure that it's not just strong results in MCAS, but we're seeing it across different experiences for students.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. So next we have K to eight ELL presentation. Is that, is this also a PowerPoint?
No, it is not.
Okay.
My name is Jennifer Suker. I'm the interim director of English Language Education, and it's nice to see all of you tonight to be here. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to share information about our English learners in Southborough. By our state's definition, an English learner is a student whose first language is not English and who is not currently able to perform ordinary classroom work in English. Second, I wanted to state that you may hear me use several acronyms this evening as this field is full of them. You might hear me refer to an English learner simply as an L and a former English learner as a FEL. You might also hear me say SEI, which stands for Sheltered English Immersion. This is the type of instruction that teaches academic content to English learners. There are others too, and I will do my best to finding them as I go. So all students exposed to another language need to be screened for English language proficiency to, to ensure that the student has the level of academic English to, to be successful in our classrooms. If a student qualifies as an English learner, the student requires specialized programming. The program that we have in place in our three districts is called Structured English Immersion, which comprises two parts: English Language Development, more commonly known as English as a Second Language, and Structured Content Instruction. This means the student must receive English Language Development, or ESL, taught by a licensed ESL teacher and to be placed in SEI classrooms, which are classrooms where the teacher has an SEI endorsement and instruction is scaffolded according to the language proficiency of the student. English learners are definitely not a homogenous group, and they do not have a fixed profile. There are many factors that we take into consideration when working with our students, and we learn about these factors by spending time talking to each family or guardian upon registering their child. From this family interview, we garner information about their child's educational background, home language and use of languages, consistency in school, mobility, if they come from urban or rural settings, possible trauma, individual factors that may impact learning, for example, learning challenges and strengths, possible or diagnosed disabilities, and their child's post-secondary goals when applicable. Tonight, we're going to look at some data that was captured last month for our school, current school year. There are three graphs in your packet with information to share tonight. The first graph is the Southborough Preschool to Grade Eight English Learner and Former English Learner Student Population Trend Analysis. This graph shows our growth since two thousand and four, when we started with just eleven English learners. Please note that the data between two thousand and five and two thousand and eight are skipped so that more recent data could be added to this graph. The numbers above the sort of dark teal bars indicate the number of students or English learners in the program every year. The numbers above the light teal bars indicate the number of students reclassified or exited from the program and who need to be monitored for four years to ensure continued growth in their learning. This is the fourth year, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, that we have captured four years of reclassified students since the new regulation to go from monitoring FELs for two years to four years was issued in two thousand and sixteen. Taking a look at both English learners and former English learners gives a more complete picture of the number of students in the district being instructed as well as actively monitored by the English Language Development teachers. This year, there are eighty English learners and fifty former English learners. There are one hundred and forty students altogether. As of November sixth, sixty-nine students K to eight have been tested for their English language proficiency in Southborough, and twenty-seven of these students qualified as Ls. The number of students tested is not reflected in this graph, but it's important to know because by law, every student exposed to another language needs to be screened for English language proficiency, and the intake and assessment take well over two hours per student. In our preschool, as of November sixth, twenty-two out of thirty-seven Southborough students are exposed to other languages for a total of eleven different languages, bringing great richness into our community. This is where the greatest growth may be seen. At this time, seven students, preschool students qualify as dual-language learners, which is the term that we use for preschoolers. Our focus for now has mostly been with four-year-olds. The second page in the packet shows the home languages of our English learners and former English learners in pre-K to grade, grade eight. This year, Chinese continues to be the predominant language, followed by Portuguese, Russian, Arabic, Vietnamese, Hindi, Japanese, Malayalam, Spanish, Telugu, Armenian, Cantonese, Croatian, Czech, Dutch, Korean, Lithuanian, Tagalog, Tamil, Gujarati, Hebrew, Polish, Romanian, and Urdu. If a family cannot read in English, the district is required by law to translate school documents and reports. The third graph is an analysis of the language proficiency levels of our students in kindergarten through grade eight. Along the horizontal axis are the five levels of language proficiency, starting with the entering level, we also call level one, emerging level, two, developing level, three, expanding level, four, and bridging level, five. If you look at the first bar, you can see that four point one, one-one percent of our Ls are at the entering level, sixteen point forty-four percent at the emerging. We break apart low and high developing, thirty-four and a quarter for low developing, four point one-one for high developing, almost thirty-seven percent at the expanding level, which is level four, and bridging level a little over four percent. Below each level is the actual number of students, and below that is the number of hours of ESL instruction that is recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. These data are important in order to understand the complexity of scheduling ELD instruction as well as the ESL staff needed to instruct these students. For example, fifty-four point eight percent of our students are in levels one, two, or low three. They need at least ninety minutes of direct ELD instruction per day. It is challenging for students who are beginning to learn English to function in a classroom, and it is crucial to provide the intensity and quality of ELD instruction our students need in order to make effective progress in their acquisition of English. Additionally, students at levels high three, four, and five, which comprises forty-five point twenty-one percent, continue to require direct instruction because the academic demands are even more intense. I mentioned earlier that the program for English learners in all three districts is Structured English Immersion. The RETL initiative, which stands for Rethinking Equity in Teaching English Language Learners, is a federal mandate in Massachusetts. It started in August two thousand and thirteen for our district. The SEI endorsement is a requirement for all core academic teachers in Massachusetts. This includes teachers of English, math, science, civics and government, economics, history and geography, special education, and career and vocational, as well as principals, assistant principals, directors who supervise these teachers. The SEI course is designed to train teachers to work with Ls from levels three and up, not levels one and two, and yet the same graduation expectations holds for all students. This is a very important initiative, but it does not address our immediate situation to provide everything needed for our students at the foundational level. We focus on every angle of education for all of our students, and this includes special education. Over the years, we have done a lot of work in understanding second language acquisition and learning. Over the years, we have done a lot of work in understanding second language acquisition and learning disabilities. Ls in Massachusetts have the good fortune of being double-tested each year. Uh, in addition to M-CAS, they also take, uh, a test put out by WIDA called the Access for Ls. WIDA stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. Many states use their assessments, and ACCESS stands for Assessing Comprehension in, and Communication in English State to State. Uh, our students take this every year in January and February, um, and it's important for accountability purposes. The Access for Ls assesses a student's proficiency level in the four domains of language: speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Our Ls in grades one through eight test online, with the writing portion being on paper for grades one and three. Uh, kindergarteners are assessed individually. The ELD teachers are trained biannually, and they're certified to administer the Access for Ls. As far as family outreach, uh, we continue to have strong homeschool relationships with our families who participate in their children's education. Um, we've already mentioned the family interviews that we do as part of our intake process to get our, to get to know our students. Um, we also encourage many of our families, if needed, for the adults to take some adult ESL classes. Uh, Asabet After Dark in Marlborough has adult ESL classes. Uh, the Northborough Public Library has an English Conversation Circles, which is open to residents of any town. So, we give them that information as well. Uh, Quinzigamount Community College in Worcester, plus, uh, some satellite campuses even closer to here, offers adult ESL classes as well. Uh, last year, we held our third, um, annual International Night at Elgonquin. We had, um, over 300 guests at that event, um, and, and that is open to all the families of Ls and FELs in Northborough and Southborough. Um, and this year's, uh, International Night is already scheduled at Elgonquin, and it will be May 1st. Um, our schools are also bringing families together at the school level to get to know one another as we continue on our journey in becoming more culturally proficient. Uh, there is wonderful collaboration and teamwork within all the fields and departments in our district to ensure that our students are receiving an outstanding education. Uh, thank you again for giving me this opportunity to update you on the EL program.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, comments?
Todd, I always enjoy this presentation, but I'm blown away by how many languages you guys are dealing with.
Isn't that fascinating? It's amazing.
It's impressive. Is there any way to tell what percentage of ELL students are being moved to former ELL? Any, any given year? I mean, given you have people coming in, I know.
Can I interject a question? So, did you say that, um, you need to stay for four years after you've moved from an EL to an FEL or an L to a FEL before you're, uh, removed from the FEL statistics?
Correct. That's exactly right. Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that was an easier question.
I wanted to be thinking of that while you answered.
Maybe I can put it another way. Like, roughly, how long does it take to move through all five levels and become a former EL?
Sure. Um, so, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education states that it takes a student about six years to acquire, um, the English language proficiency that they need to be reclassified. Um, certainly, that depends on the individual student. It depends on the educational background, the learning, um, a lot of factors. So, that isn't always the case, but that's what they, their expectation is. But we, we do not have to reclassify at six years. Uh, we can reclassify, um, when the data support it.
And that would be reclassifying out of the whole thing, or?
Out of L to become FEL. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, six years as an L in general.
Correct. Correct.
Is that about what you've been seeing?
Yes. Um, so, prior to this position, I was teaching at Elgonquin, and a lot of my students came at the high school level, um, so we didn't always get to see them at that stage. Um, but, yes, um, particularly with, uh, strong literacy skills in the first language, um, those skills tend to transfer to English or whatever the target language is. Those students do quite well. Um, but in general, our district has, has very good success with our students moving off the ranks and reclassifying.
Yeah, I was trying to correlate, uh, the, uh, you know, that, that particular graph we're really talking about, the Ls, the FELs. Doesn't seem to be any way to really do it. I mean, it's, uh, probably you have populations that move in and out, so.
Yes. Yes, it's a transnational population. Sure.
You can't take a look and say, well, why is, these two numbers don't add up to the last number?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I really like these charts. I, I, the graph, some of them chart. Well, I recommend that, uh, you have a chance the next time, and you find a way to get it into a projection. I, I think that, um, people would enjoy or find it educational to, who are maybe watching this, uh, this broadcast, because the picture is really worth, you know, thousands of words. They're, they're very good.
Certainly. Thank you.
Well, and I'm always, I'm, I'm with Paul, where I, I, I always enjoy seeing, seeing all these languages, but then also looking at the numbers where 130 L or F, F, FEL, FEL students.
Perfect.
And we have 1,200 students in, in total, so that's over 10% of the entire student population. It's a very substantial part, so, thank you.
Yes. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Is everyone all set?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Um, next we have, uh, MASC, Mass Joint Conference Recap.
So, last Thursday and Friday, I had the opportunity to attend Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendent's Conference. Um, and I went to many con, many sessions, but the three that stood out, um, I'd like to just share a little bit about those.
Great.
Um, the first was, uh, Compelling Communication: How to Strengthen Your District's Brand in the Community. And that was, uh, presented by Chris Haran, who was, um, the late Boston Mayor, Thomas P. Menino's Communication Director. Um, so, he talked about, he's also, he was the Boston Public Schools Chief Communication Officer, so has a lot of practical experience. And he really talked about, um, it's, it's about brand strategy. It's not always about what tools you're using, rather, what's the message? And he said that messages need to be compelling, simple, and accessible. And he really talked about, um, you know, when looking at a strategic plan, um, that it needs to be relevant and understandable, um, and really think about, um, strengthening your brand and thinking about what's that message you want to consistently share with the community. So, it was a great session. And I think that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, English Language Department, can learn a little bit about being simple, because there are so many acronyms in the L world. It's hard to keep track of all of them.
It's true.
Um, the second, um, workshop that I really enjoyed was, it was called Achieve: Energy Savings, Facility Upgrades, and Renewable Incentives in Student Enrichment. And it was really a case study of, uh, Dyton-Rohoboth Regional School District, who worked with Trane, um, to implement solar carports, biomass heating, LED lighting, to generate new revenue sources. So, they talked about, um, how they accomplished that and the success they're having. So, I had a couple of takeaways from that to bring back to Northborough and Southborough. And the last, the last one was very riveting. It was Conducting a Meaningful and Effective Superintendent Evaluation. So, they are trying to simplify the process, um, and I have a handout for, for you to take. Um, but basically, it talked about the new streamlined rubric and process to evaluate superintendents that is being piloted this year and will be launched next, next year. So, overall, it was, um, great to connect with, um, other superintendents and school committees and hear some of the challenges that are taking place across the Commonwealth, but also the successes. So, it was time well spent.
Do you have an acronym for the Superintendent Evaluation?
Uh, I'll come up with one later.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, next, we have a legislative update.
So, um, just an update on the, um, the Opportunity Act, um, the funding reform that's taking place at the state level. Um, it has passed the House and the Senate, and it is in joint conference committee. Um, Kattora and I had the opportunity to attend a Chamber of Commerce, uh, meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, and Governor Charlie Baker presented, and, um, he said that he was hoping that the, the bill would be passed by, um, after Thanksgiving, early December, um, which is great. That will give us some more firm numbers in terms of how, uh, the new funding legislation will impact, um, our budget process. And I'm optimistic that it will be helpful. So, more to, more to follow, more information to come in the next couple of weeks.
Great. Okay, uh, no old business at this time, and then we have the superintendent's report to the committee.
So, um, in your packet, uh, we have our enrollment reports. Um, as of October 21st, we have increased, um, I think by five students. Uh, we now have an, um, enrollment of 1,200. Um, and we have increased overall 10 students since the beginning of the school year. Um, so, we're, we're holding pretty steady, um, and, um, you know, we'll keep monitoring as we look at the budget process for FY21, um, and doing our enrollment projections for next year. Also in your packet are, um, NESDEC's annual, um, enrollment projections. Um, you know, this is an important and timely document. Again, it helps, um, us make informed decisions about the FY21 budget. Um, and, and NESDEC is projecting, uh, 1,207 students, um, next year. So, um, we're really holding steady in terms of our overall enrollment numbers. And it also, um, projects enrollments over the next several years to, um, maintain at a steady rate, and then begin to increase in, I believe, '24, '25, so.
Um, I have a question. How often do they update their projections? Is it on a rolling basis?
It is on a rolling basis. Um, and if communities would like, they'll do a more in-depth analysis of birth rates, um, what's happening in terms of real estate sales. And usually, I think, communities engage in that work every five years. But I think in terms of what we see, it's, it's been pretty steady and pretty accurate for the most part.
Yes, okay.
It's the first time we've seen an increase since I've been looking at these anyway.
And next in your packet is the FY20 month, uh, monthly general fund expenditure report, and I'll let Becky, um, share a few highlights.
So, the report that's in your packet is as of October 31st of this year. Um, we continue to meet on a weekly basis to look at, um, the budget and to monitor, um, any areas that concern us at this point in time. As you can see, that there are no significant variances from the previous month. Um, as of this year, um, we are at 4.48% of the budget remaining. Um, last year, we had 5.35% remaining, and what that means is we've been encumbering, um, more this year. We've been really looking at our line items and making sure that, um, things that we know we are going to be expending, we're putting in conferences in, so that we have a true picture as to where we're going today. Um, so, uh, we've been, as I said, working very closely and feel very confident about the budget.
So, now, right now, we have, uh, our feet in two worlds, FY21 and FY20.
Great. Do we need a vote on this, or we?
I'll move that we, uh, accept the Southborough Public Schools District monthly general fund expenditure report as of October 31st, 2019, from the fiscal year 2020 budget until audit.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
So, next in your packet are the FY21 budget priorities that we discussed, um, at our last meeting. And in your packet, um, there's a redlined, um, copy. I think we, um, on the third bullet, we added, um, integrate innovative 21st century skills. We added that word, innovate. Um, we struck the fourth bullet, and then on the sixth bullet, um, where it says, "Provide excellent education by," um, and we said, "Maintain a multi-year technology cycle of renewal and maintenance." Those were the edits from our last meeting.
Which bullet was the heading, "Renovate"?
It was the third bullet, um, Southborough Public Schools to adopt.
Well, innovate.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's the will of the committee to vote.
All right.
I'll move that we accept the fiscal year 2021 School Committee Budget Priorities as submitted.
Second.
Need discussion? All in favor?
So, next in your packet is the, um, capital, FY21 Capital Plan. So, it looks at FY21 through '27, um, looking at major, uh, projects, um, in our district. The Capital Plan Subcommittee met, um, I believe it was last week, it feels a couple of weeks ago, um, to look at, um, what plans we have in place. So, for FY21, it's really the Boiler Replacement Project at Finn Elementary School, um, and that project, um, is being subsidized through the MSBA. And we've already had, um, an onsite project manager, manager, assigned, and architects as well. Uh, so, we are underway with that project. Um, in FY22, um, we will resubmit statements of interest for, um, our roofs at, um, Neary, um, Trotter and Finn. Um, but really, the priority would be, um, Neary. And we're also looking at, um, repaving the parking lots at Neary. It's in pretty tough shape and, um, spending some money in terms of, uh, revamping the parking lot. Um, and those are some of the highlights for FY21 and FY22.
Okay.
Um, I'm curious, are you, is the, um, Neary parking lot project, um, simply a repaving? Or are you doing any, I guess, um, kind of flow control evaluations?
So, um, we were primarily, um, in terms of the cost, this is purely paving and resurfacing. But at the time, we, you know, repaving, we definitely would look at traffic flow and safety and of the overall parking layout, and try to make some enhancements.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we need to vote on this?
Vote to.
All right. Make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the Southborough Public Schools fiscal year 2021 through 2027 Facilities Capital Plan.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Great.
So, next in your, um, packet is the proposed, um, FY budget calendar. So, we've added a few dates. Principals have submitted, um, their budget priorities to Central Office, and we are compiling those and, and running our first FY21 budget draft. Um, we also, um, met with the town administrators, uh, Selectman Chair, Financial Advisory Chair, and, um, School Committee Vice Chair to talk about the FY21 budget landscape in the town of Southborough, um, and just to start an open conversation and dialogue.
And so then likely, budget presentation next?
So, the, the goal is to have a, um, preliminary FY21 budget presentation at the December meeting.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so now, uh, educational policy at this time, um, policy development and their distribution.
So, we have, um, a first reading of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Policy. This policy was taken up last year by the Policy Subcommittee. Um, we sent it to legal counsel for review, so what you have in front of you is the redlined, uh, legal review, um, with some updates. So, tonight is just a first read.
Does that mean the stuff in red is all from the lawyers?
Yes.
Reads like it.
It does.
I wonder, I like the changes. Anyone have any comments or discussion on this right now?
Yeah, I, I don't, like, when we say, I mean, I guess we're adding staff along with, you know, it's a violation of voluntary student or staff member to be engaged in bullying.
Yeah.
But we go on to name, like, just about every staff position there is. I don't see, I don't see why you need to do that.
I can check back to legal counsel, and, um, I think, um, I can get the specific reason, but I think oftentimes when this policy is reviewed, it's, you know, I think people are... I think oftentimes, when this policy is reviewed, you know, I think people are assumed to be left out, that we don't assume that, you know, it includes school nurses, cafeteria workers, custodians, bus drivers, athletic coaches, the broad range of people.
It seems to me the danger is the other way. If you just say students and staff, that includes everybody.
It's more broad.
But if there's somebody that we didn't list here.
Although, I don't know that people would read it and see staff and automatically assume that includes bus driver and coach and that kind of thing. I didn't mind this addition only because it kind of made me think more broadly, but, you know.
I guess, I didn't mind it the first time, the second time. I don't think the third or fourth time, but.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, it's just the repeat of?
Maybe we don't have to repeat it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, take that back to the policy committee. All right, thank you. All right, next, we have Personnel Report.
So, in your packet is the Distribution of Personnel Report. And we do have a couple of retirements on there that are pretty significant that Mr. Ryan will speak to at a future meeting.
Mrs. Hughes. All right, then we have Action on Minutes. So, we have the Minutes, the Open Meeting on Monday, October 7th, and the Executive Session Minutes of October 7th also.
I'll move that we approve the Minutes from the Southborough School Committee Open Meeting of Monday, October 7th, 2019. Second.
Discussion? Should I? I've never been absent. Should I just abstain?
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
No, you can vote.
Okay, yes. Great, all in favor? All right, thank you. All right, then we have Bills and Payrolls.
So, we've got to do the executive session?
Yep, and then Agenda Items for next?
Yeah, vote two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Approve and retain.
I thought they were both at the same.
Yeah, approve and retain.
I'm sorry.
I'll move that we accept the Minutes of the Executive Session of the Southborough School Committee on November 7th to be retained.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right, Bills and Payrolls after, okay. Agenda Items for next month. Budget.
Budget.
We mentioned. All right, anything else?
Any updates on school cafeteria? I feel like there was going to be some news around, I don't remember exactly, to be honest, but I feel like there was supposed to be an update.
We can have Mr. Parsons come back and give an update.
Yeah, so it's going out, food and bringing fresh foods, we get local farms and, you know.
All right. Okay, which brings us to Audience Sharing, our second audience sharing. Does anybody have anything? Okay, so now, we'll, we have on here to go into executive session with no intent of returning to open meeting. Anybody make a motion for that?
I'll move that we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a potential effect on the position of the committee with no intent to return to open meeting. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, roll call, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.